Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 11th River Falls City Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristi, can I have a roll call, please?
Bierstedt.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Kron, or sorry.
Hello.
I have an old one. Kanye.
[laughing]
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Here.
Donning.
Here.
We have approval of the minutes from the June 27th regular meeting and the workshop minutes and the June 27th closed session minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the minutes as listed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of the bills with Mr. Watson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the bills in the amount of $777,986.62, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
All in favor? Sorry.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we move on to public comments. If there's anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Otherwise, we'll move on. There's just one thing I wanted to mention. I've had a few people ask me about with what the city has going on with Habitat for Humanity. It in no way affects the people that live out there, just so people know that this will have no negative effect on them whatsoever. So, we can move on. So I will close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2017-15, amending section 2.52 of the municipal code, the EMS Advisory Board. This is the second reading. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say about this? Otherwise, we will close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2017-15.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, again, I'll close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance number 2017-16. This is dog and other domestic animal ordinances. This is the second reading, too. This ordinance would add language to chapter 6.04, referring first-time attacks by dogs. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of ordinance 2017-16.
Wait, I got a quick comment on ordinance 2016 here.
Okay, hang on, hang on.
Hang on a second.
Okay, we've got first, second, now. Is there any questions or comments?
I wish to strike and remove the language unwanted and the word "or," so it reads, "Any stray dog or cat, wild animal, or rabies vaccinated dog," much more forwardly in that sense.
So are you referring to 6.04.090A?
Yep.
The first sentence in that?
Because we don't really know if they're wanted or unwanted in this sense. They're just, that's kind of a risky language.
Well, but we may not know if they're stray or not either.
They're stray if they don't have an owner.
Dogs get out without collars all the time. We don't know if they're strays or not.
The reason I'm mentioning it, though, is because it's, you know, we're referring to if it's bitten a person. So, having, referring to the expert's advice.
I think you've got a couple different spots there. You've got a paragraph that addresses one specific item, and then down at the very bottom, there's another thing that we're addressing. So it could be, they could both tie into the same incident, or they could be two totally separate issues there. I like it as is personally.
Okay, so we got a motion to amend it to drop wanted or unwanted.
So, I just have a question. You know, so can you just tell me, I mean, unwanted, if, in that case, what would be an unwanted case, I guess is what we're asking ourselves here, if someone said, "Well, I don't want that, you know, that's not my dog," or "I don't want that dog," or what's the situation that you're dealing with?
So I mean, like, the idea that we can determine if it's unwanted or wanted, it's kind of hyperbole because animals run off all the time. We don't really necessarily know if they're unwanted. That's a, you know, just a, you know, perception that someone makes. But the expert's decision's really the most important one, once it's bitten a person, not necessarily what our perception might be.
I would, I would oppose that, because if it's, if it's in fact a wanted dog or a cat, I think the owner should, I think the owner should be notified before it's euthanized and have an opportunity to have a say in it. So I, I like the language as is.
Yeah, I mean, and B, we give them a 10-day holding period so they can be tested and make sure they're, they're safe for the community. And then the doc, that physician, veterinarian makes that further judgment call. So it is in their hands.
You know, it's okay either way. I just kind of thought it was unnecessary to have, to like, have us kind of make a perceptual call. But I do agree that an owner should have some say in it, but not to the sense that they override the expert. So.
I would defer to the parliamentarian here, but I think I, there's a point of order here. We've had a motion, we haven't had a second, we have discussion.
Yeah.
So I think we, did we get a second?
Yeah. Not on the motion, on yours we did.
Yeah.
But on, on his motion to amend it, there's, I have no second yet. Does anybody want a second? Okay, it dies from no second, so we'll go back to the original motion. That has been first and seconded. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we go on to consent agenda. This is resolution authorizing sale of surplus equipment.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, I think there's a typo in, two vehicles are indicated as electric superintendent's vehicles, which is not the case. The van is the-
I wondered about that.
-is the superintendent's vehicle.
He's got his own fleet.
And I believe the other one is, has been used by inspections.
I could be wrong, but I think one vehicle died and he took the next one down, and then I think we're getting rid of that one, too. I could be wrong, but that's the way I think it is.
There's four, four vehicles altogether, right?
Mr. The latest user of that one, both of those. Maybe we shouldn't let him use any other vehicles.
Yeah, maybe it's him.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, questions or comments?
Just a, just a quick question. A couple of the vehicles, it says, "Used until replacement vehicle arrives." So we're going to delay selling those, obviously, until, okay. Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance resolutions, this resolution amending the fee schedule. This resolution would amend the fee schedule regarding permitting fees for fences. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the resolution amending the fee schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just have a question on that. So when we enact an ordinance like this at a previous meeting, but there's no fee on that, when does that specific ordinance take effect for the public? Say they put it, put in a request to put up a fence, or they put diggers in and then the city calls them. Actually, it happened to me, it's kind of funny. The fence is up prior to that, but just curious how that works for people at home, if they put in that request and then they get that letter, but there's no fee schedule yet.
It might be a legal question, but I'd say until tonight, there's no fee. Once it's passed-
Do you still have to put in a permit request? Because that ordinance-
Because the ordinance says that.
The ordinance is enacted, but there's just no fee.
Right, there would be a no fee for the ordinance, or for the permit.
All right, cool, thanks.
The discount period is now over.
Thanks.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we move on to reports. And we have a report from the UW River Falls. We got Chancellor Van Gaal and the Director of Facilities Management, Alan Simasek.
Thank you, Mayor Tolan. A pleasure to be with you this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to provide you an update on UW River Falls. So I'll take probably about 10 to 15 minutes and tell you what's going on at the university. A little history, as many of you know, UW River Falls was founded as a normal school in 1874. The photo you're looking at is the original normal school building, built on the side of South Hall. It burnt down in November of 1897. $30,000, and 10 months later, South Hall was built. I'll let you compare that to the Falcon Center project I'll talk about in a little while. But we have a wonderful history, as you know. Currently, our enrollment, this past fall was just under 6,000 students. We will be above 6,000 as our enrollment is now growing this fall. About 62% female students, 38% male, about 140 international students from 20 countries, and about 450 graduate students. The vast majority of those students make River Falls their home. And I appreciate very much for the relationship that exists between the university and the city. A little bit about enrollment growth. This is some data I thought you might enjoy looking at, the number of new freshmen as we look to the incoming fall class for 2017. I've listed two years of data on the number of applications for new freshmen, which 2017, of course, is towards the left, the number of admitted students, and the number of registered students, which is the strongest indicator of how many students we'll have on campus as new freshmen this fall. You can see some really significant growth over the last two years, and we anticipate a class of new freshmen this year of about 1,300 students, which will be the largest in a number of years. So this is good news. Our residence halls will be full, and it will, of course, carry over into enrollment for the next several years. A few other updates, and I like to frame those in our strategic plan called Pathway to Distinction. Three goals: academic excellence, global engagement, and innovation and partnerships. And I'll just give you a few examples of things that we're working on and doing. You may know the largest major, UW River Falls is animal science. We have a rich history in agriculture. We have the second-largest dairy science program in the country in terms of undergraduate enrollment. Number one is Cornell. Other large majors: business administration, biology, and elementary education. Of course, that last one really connects with our roots as a teachers' college, and we're very proud of that. We have began some new academic programs, some majors, in the last two years. I think this has been one of many factors contributing to our enrollment growth. We started a bachelor's degree in data science, so when you think of the term "big data," the ability to analyze and make predictions based on the large data sets that are now out there in many industries, this is a new academic program that will prepare students for those types of opportunities. A new bachelor's degree in agricultural engineering, and also a bachelor's degree in neuroscience. So a lot of these tend to be in the STEM fields, and over the first year, we are seeing some strong interest among students. And I think also the opportunities beyond graduation are very strong for these programs. A little bit on the state budget. As you probably know, the legislature as a whole has not acted on the state budget. A lot of conversation about that. It's difficult to say when the budget will be voted upon and signed by the governor. That said, the Joint Finance Committee did vote on the UW system budget a number of weeks ago, and it was really very positive. I would say the, the most positive budget we've seen in a decade. Now, we've had some very serious budget cuts, especially two years ago, but this would represent a step forward, assuming it is enacted into law by the legislature and governor. I won't get into all the details, but some new investment from the state also included would be a compensation plan, a pay plan for faculty and staff, 2% in September 2018, 2% in 2019. This is really critical, because when you look at our peer institutions, including for faculty, we are significantly behind. And this has been a really challenging environment for us to recruit and retain talent. And really, the heart of the university is, is the people who provide that high-quality education. So we're very grateful for that step forward by the state of Wisconsin. And I do want to thank, thank the council. In January, you passed a resolution of support for the UW system budget request that was sent on to legislators. You and many others, including business leaders, really stepped up and said, "Look, education, higher education is important to this state, and I really believe that's made a difference." So I thank you for that action and the other ways you've supported the university and the UW system. A little bit about capital projects, and Alan is here. In the event you have some more detailed questions, looks like Mr. Simpson is in this photo, as we did a tour of the Falcon Center a couple months ago. I know several members, members of the council were able to tour it as well. It is almost completed, and it will be ready to go as we begin the fall academic year. And we also have a grand opening for everyone, for the community, on September 21st. I hope that you and many citizens of River Falls can come out and see this wonderful facility. There'll be food and drink, things to do. Maybe we can get the governor, or the mayor on the climbing wall. I don't know what that would be, look like, but.
Fat guys on walls don't look very well.
No comment. But it really is a great community asset, and we're grateful for the state of Wisconsin, and also our students, and some donors who stepped up in terms of making this $63.5 million facility a reality. This was envisioned beginning in about 1994, so it's been over 20 years. It's been a very long road, and I hope you can join us in the celebration. Just a few photographs of the Falcon Center. The Don Page Arena will be our new competition arena for basketball and volleyball, named after former athletic director and ambassador Don Page. The bleachers went in last week, I believe, and it will be a wonderful facility for not only the campus, but I think the entire community and the region. Also, the new fitness center opened in January, a great opportunity for students and others to develop lifelong habits of wellness and fitness, a great asset. And then athletics is also part of the Falcon Center project. And here's a photograph of the women's soccer locker room. A lot of spirit, as you can tell. And if you've seen Karges in some of those facilities, you know this will be a big step forward. Other projects, as we look down the road over the next two years, we anticipate the renovation of Rodley Hall, which was our dining facility before the university center opened. Offered a lot of fine dining to students for many years. And now, we totally renovated into a student services center, housing a lot of different functions, including admissions, financial aid, the career center, undergraduate research, study abroad. So in about two years, we'll reopen that facility, which is about a $15.1 million project. And then looking further down the road, our next major capital project that we're working with, the system and stayed on, would be some renovation of our science facilities. This would be a comprehensive renovation. As you probably know, we now have Centennial Science Hall, Ag Science, and Hagstead, which will be pretty much empty after Rodley Hall opens. So we're looking at major renovation of those facilities, maybe a new structure as well, really to enable us to teach science and other STEM fields in a, in a modern way to serve our students. So, you know, we're looking out a number of years, but that project now is, is underway. So to kind of wrap things up, a little bit about university-city partnerships. And I really want to emphasize, that relationship is, I think, very strong, and it's something that is important and precious to, to the university. And I appreciate the level of collaboration that goes on between the city and UW River Falls. I guess the water tower kind of symbolized that. When that curtain came down, I guess it was last July, that was kind of a neat moment. I was on the roof of North Hall, which I probably shouldn't have been, but it was, it was a great sight. River Falls days, we'll be in the parade, have about 50 people there later this week. That relationship, again. Economic impact, of course, we'll have about 6,000 students, 800 employees, a number of whom live in the River Falls city or this region. A lot of opportunities for our students to be employed and serve as internships in businesses. We have been welcoming more and more people to our annual undergraduate research event on campus. I think that's something we, we love to see the community at, especially schoolchildren. And then, you know, we're a resource, and I think it's important for people to know, this is your university. And resources like the library, the Center for Economic Research, arts and cultural events, sports, all of this, we welcome people of River Falls to campus. Education, of course, many of the teachers in the school district were educated at River Falls. We've done some good things, I think, in Montessori education, and we're welcoming, again this year, about 20 students from China, who will spend one day a week in the River Falls School District, working with teachers and students. I think a really wonderful cultural experience for everyone involved. And then visitors and tourism. We do host the Falcon Frontier Rodeo every fall. It's the largest collegiate rodeo east of the Mississippi. You can think about that a little bit. Homecoming and, and other events. And then finally, something you know very much about, the St. Cro Valley Business Innovation Center partnership that we've been working on with others, the River Falls EDC, CVTC, for a number of years. And I, and I especially want to thank Scott Simpson for his leadership in this effort. It's been quite a journey, but I think it will be a wonderful thing for our community. And then finally, as part of our strategic plan, every year we celebrate a different country. And we just finished Brazil, and this coming year will be the year of South Korea. So on campus, we have cultural events. We try to encourage faculty to bring information into the classroom from that country. Then, again, this, this year will be South Korea. So very excited about that. So again, thank you for everything you do to support the university, and you are always welcome on our campus, of course, and, and I say that to the entire River Falls community. It's, it's your university. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments that you have this evening.
Yeah?
I have a quick question. It was something that was real interesting to me. Chancellor, you showed right away in the beginning, 62 to 38% females to males. And I know, this is maybe not a UW River Falls question, but just in general, we, we do lots of things to help promote girls or females into science and other programs. Are we at a point now that we need to start doing things to help the, the young male and try to get a gender equity going on? Or, or is that?
Well, I guess I'd start by saying, I think we should encourage all young people to consider higher education, whatever that, that may be. Interestingly, what you see there is a national phenomenon. Girls, women now enter higher education at a higher rate than men. They succeed at a higher rate, and they graduate at a higher rate than men. And so I guess you, you could say, it's fair to say we need to ensure that, that males are also being encouraged to, to move into higher education. You know, in the STEM area, of course, historically, there's been a much smaller percentage of women going into STEM fields. That has changed some, especially in biology and medicine, to some degree chemistry. But when you look at engineering, often physics, those types of programs, there's still, women are underrepresented, and yet they, they surely have the, the talent to do that. So that's, I think, one of the reasons why there's a focus on some of those STEM fields.
Yeah, but 62 to 38, that's, that's significant.
Well, it is. And part of that reflects the mix of majors. So Plattville, for example, which is very heavy in engineering, I believe, has more males than females. But if you look around the system, what we're seeing at River Falls is, is fairly common.
That's sad.
Well, we just think we know it all already.
We did, yeah.
And I'll choose not to respond to that either.
Chancellor, I've got a question. Back to, almost similar to a question more about trends. You know, we have our discussions with the school district. They can see, you know, larger classes coming through the system pretty easily. I'm wondering if the university is witnessing or seeing any kind of, I don't even know, I mean, you, you have international students, but any kind of trends with larger, you know, you know, is your, are you projecting enrollment to have a blip, a big blip in five years, and then taper back to a normal, you know, or what, can you talk a little bit about those trends?
Certainly. If, if you look at the big picture and you look at the number of high school graduates projected in the state of Wisconsin, as well as Minnesota, that has been declining for probably five or seven years. It has leveled off and will very slowly increase over the next few years. But it will not come back to the previous levels for many, many years. So in general, the UW system has seen a decrease in overall enrollment. If you look back at our enrollment, it has declined over the last five or six years. Our freshman classes three, four, five, six years ago were smaller. And so that has impacted our enrollment overall. The last three years, we've really placed a emphasis on student recruitment, and, and that has really been successful. Great work by admissions, by our entire campus, a lot of new scholarship offerings. And so we are, you know, the data you saw really go against the trend of the demographics very much. So, but that's important because that drives many things at the university.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
When you shared that, I asked that same question when we had the tour, and you said at best, probably in the next five to 10 years, we maybe can anticipate a 1% to 2% increase per year at the most for each of those years. So, I kind of know what you're saying. There's not much of an increase that's going to be happening.
I think when you look at high school, the number of high school graduates, that's very true. Now, if you look at what's going to happen at River Falls, or Plattville, or Stevens Point, that's also more related to what the institution does in terms of student recruitment, scholarships, academic programs, all of that. And it's, of course, a very competitive environment. But in, all in all, it will be pretty flat. If you look at the percent of graduates, high school graduates who enter the UW system, that has been quite constant for well over a decade. So you can kind of predict, based on the number of graduates, how many will enter the UW system.
And I would imagine alternative learning, online classes and things are impacting that, although I would assume those are enrollments as well?
They are enrollments as well. It's a factor. Although, being a fairly traditional campus as we are, by and large, 18-year-olds still want to attend a residential campus, have that face-to-face interaction, and the things you learn through that when, when you're in that part of your life. Of course, we opened the Hudson Center now about eight years ago. That's had strong enrollment, over 100 students, but that serves non-traditional adult learners. So we have our MBA program there and the Adult Degree Completion Program. Average age would be in the, the lower 40s.
Sure. I think I ask you this question every time you appear in front of us, and you, appreciate your indulgence, but I know a couple of years ago, you had like 138 Brazilian students here. And I'm, so I'm wondering, you answered it a little bit in your presentation. We have about 20 students from China here, or was that just the teaching piece? But do we have a larger concentration of-
South Koreans.
-of, of international students here? I think that's helpful for the public to know that, you know, maybe there's some, you know, some ethnic foods that we need to stock or some, things like that, that-
Right.
...help with the community and help with-
So if, if you go back probably eight years, we had 70 or 80 international students. We'll be at about 130 to 150. I think that's, you know, where we'll be for the most part. We did have a large number of students from Brazil on campus for about three years. Through the Brazilian Scientific Mobility Program, they were sending a lot of students paid for by the Brazilian government. Due to their economic and political problems, they have stopped that program. And so we had a huge spike overall in international students that has now kind of settled back down. The leading sources are international students. China would, would typically be number one. South Korea, Taiwan would be up there as well. But we're also seeing students from, you know, Africa and different parts of Europe. And we, we like that. We'd like to have a diversity of international students because of what that brings to, to the campus.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I have another question as well. So has there ever been any talk about bringing an Ames Lab situation back in, onto campus? Maybe, do you remember Ames Lab at all?
I've heard about it.
Okay.
No, I've not heard any, any discussion of that.
I thought it was a great resource when it was in town, and it taught the teachers how to teach, and it gave the students an opportunity to learn. And I, it was a great resource for the university and the, the community. So if there's ever any talk about it again, I would put a thumbs up for you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? No? Okay, thanks Chancellor Van Gaal.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, next we move on to the administrators' report. Anybody's got anything for Scott? Or Scott, you got anything for us?
We're getting busy with River Falls Day, so I'm about the only staff person that does, doesn't do any work for River Falls Day. So we're looking forward to inviting people to town. I see the, the parade spot reserve system is, is working effectively. And we would just remind those of you who have staked out, literally staked out your spots, that it's important for River Falls people to welcome the visitors that we have. And, and just because you got your blanket out on Monday doesn't mean you shouldn't invite somebody, maybe even somebody with a Hudson sweatshirt on, to join you at the front, front of the curb there.
of the curve there and enjoy the parade. So, let's put on our, our warmest and friendliest face for the, for the parade. I think that's the reason that the council's allowed the, the reservation system to continue, is people just need to make sure that they're gracious when Friday comes. I'd take any questions you might have.
Anybody got anything for Scott? Okay, move into, we're going to recess into closed session per Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 IG for the following purposes: conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. To it, St. Croix Valley Habitat for Humanity, outstanding debt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We move into closed session.
Kristy, can we have a roll call, please?
Second.
Bjork.
Here.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Watson.
Yes.
Gagne.
Yes.
Morsette.
Yes.
Downing.
Yes.
Bjurstet.
Yes.
Close session.